I'd like to call to order the November tenth, twenty twenty one. Good evening. I'd like to call to order the November tenth, twenty twenty one board meeting. Mrs. Hutchinson, will you please call the roll?
Here.
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 Here. Uh, Mr. Paulson, will you lead us in the pledge?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic, the states, one nation, under God, indivisible, infinite, and just as one.
The first item on the agenda is the approval to open the public hearing on the driver education waiver for the twenty twenty one, twenty twenty one, twenty twenty two school year through twenty twenty five, twenty twenty six school years. I need a motion and a second to open the hearing on the driver education waiver for the twenty twenty one, twenty twenty two school year, twenty twenty five, twenty twenty six school years.
So moved.
Moved by Mr. Paulson, seconded by Mrs. Booton. Um, can you call the roll, Mrs. Hutchinson?
Yes.
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 Yes. Um, we have nobody signed up for the driver's education, um, hearing. Is there any comments from staff?
Yeah, I'm gonna let Dr. Kyle just give the board a very brief reminder of what the hearing is for 'cause it's a preview of an agenda item at your next meeting, so.
Excellent. Thanks, Dr. Schuler, and thanks, uh, school board. We are asking the board, um, to hold a public hearing to renew a waiver of the state code to allow up to three hours of driver's ed simulator to, um, substitute for three hours of behind the wheel. How we do driver's ed through the last waiver, we have twelve hours of simulation and three hours behind the wheel. This waiver would be for the twenty one, twenty two school year through twenty five, twenty six school years. If we did not get the waiver, uh, the difference in students that we service in driver's ed currently right now, we about five hundred and fifty per year. If we followed the school code, it'd be three hundred and thirty. That's a difference of two hundred and twenty students. Um, so what we're asking is for the board to allow us to have the hearing on this waiver for driver's ed to substitute three hours of simulator for three hours of behind the wheel.
Just to be very clear, Dr. Kyle, this is a continuation of practice.
It is continued. Yes, we're renewing a waiver that we got back in, uh, July of twenty fifteen.
Are there any questions or comments from board members?
Is this a pretty common practice amongst high schools in the area?
I don't know every high school. I just know the high school I came from, we had, we had the same waiver.
If they use simulators, I do believe so. And it actually, when you look at the simulator time, it actually ends up involving more time than just the strict behind the wheel time 'cause they're getting more time on the simulators, uh, in the aggregate.
Any other questions or comments? Okay, um, I need a motion and a second to close the public hearing on driver education waiver for the twenty twenty one, twenty twenty two through twenty twenty five, twenty twenty six school years.
So moved.
Moved by Mr. Long.
Second.
Second by Mrs. Booton. Mrs. Hutchinson, will you please call the roll?
Yes.
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 Yes. Okay, now we're on to communication with the host school. Dr. Rodriguez is here to share information with us about Lowell.
Good evening. My name is Dr. Jacqueline Rodriguez, and I have the privilege of being the principal of Lowell Elementary. First, I would like to thank the Board of Education for all of your hard work and dedication to the students and staff in District two hundred. At Lowell School, we take pride in building positive relationships with our students, and it plays an important part in school connectivity-ness. Recently, our students in grade second and fifth grade took a relationship questionnaire that surveyed if they had a caring adult they connected with at Lowell. Our data revealed that ninety-six percent of our students feel they have a trusted adult at Lowell. Today, a group of our students from Lowell will be presenting to you about their experiences and how they connect to a trusted adult at Lowell. We are very proud of the relationships between students and staff at Lowell, as well as our wonderful students who will be here today to speak to you. We present Ryan.
Like Dr., like Dr. Rodriguez said, Lowell is an amazing place. One of my favorite parts about Lowell is all the things you can participate in, like student council, safety patrol, chorus, band, and orchestra. It's just amazing for everything Lowell does for the students and helps us feel connected. One of my favorite memories of being in Lowell and being participated in something is being in student council, which made me some new friends, which is just amazing.
Thank you. I present Levi.
Hello, my name is Levi Manley, and I like being on student council because student council is a great place that is made specifically to help people and give some children a sense of what happens in Lowell. They give ideas on how to improve our school and community, and it helps places that are miles away from us, as well as Lowell. The fundraiser is for Lowell, which is where students donate money to Lowell so that Lowell can hire new people and get recess and P E equipment, and a food drive, which is where students donate food to Lowell, and then Lowell gets it all and gives it to the places in port that need the food. Are great examples of that. It makes me feel involved in helping people.
I present, thank you, Levi. Lulu is next.
Adding on to what Levi said, the staff here at Lowell are always so welcoming. All the teachers also treat me as if I was their own family. They always try their best to educate me and keep me safe. It's so generous of them. I'm also thankful we are able, we were enabled to do in person this year and last year. It makes me feel closer to my friends. I'm also able to participate in so many more school activities, such as chorus, band, safety patrol, and color guard, and so much more.
Thank you, Lulu. Next, we call, next we call Jet.
I may have not been at Lowell for a long time, less than a year, but it feels like I've been here for a long time. I've made so many new friends and feel very welcomed. When I moved here from Elk Park, I immediately loved it, and going to my new school made it so much better. The friend, my, the students at Lowell make me, make me feel very welcomed, like when someone was in line and, and I needed help getting stuff from my backpack and, and he came out just to come help me. I think that just shows how loving and caring Lowell can be.
Thank you, Jet. Next, I call Elliot.
One of my favorite teachers is Megan Daniels. I like her because it was her first year, yet right after that, she and the rest of the students connected so fast that the whole class felt like a family. That was an awesome year. Another one of my favorite teachers is the teacher I'm having right now, Ms. Rodriguez. She's over there. I like her because we learn a lot while we play games. This is going to be an amazing year. Lowell just feels like one giant big family. That's why I like it so much.
Thank you, Elliot. Next, I call Colin.
There are many teachers and staff members at Lowell that make me feel connected to Lowell. Pretty much all the staff members are very caring and always want us to learn and just have fun at Lowell. All the teachers there make sure everything that we do is fun and make sure we learn enough to, um, have a good education. Just all the staff members and students just make the atmosphere around Lowell just so, so awesome, and they just make me feel like a part of the Lowell family. Thank you for your time, and on behalf of Lowell School, have a great evening.
I would like to especially thank our families for bringing the students and our kids for being up here to talk to you. It gives you a picture of Lowell Elementary as a whole. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Dr. Rodriguez, and thank you Lowell students. I'm sure Mrs. Loyacano would love to get a picture of you if you wanted to, um... Mrs. Loyacano will probably take you toward the back there. Thank you. Are there any modifications to the agenda? I have a modification that I'd like to make, um, and ask the board, uh, what their thoughts are. Um, I know we have some children in the audience that also would like to speak tonight. Um, we have comments, um, that just sometimes say comments and stuff on here, so my suggestion is, can we take our comments of agenda and non-agenda items, move them all together at the front end?
I'm fine with that.
Anybody have a, anybody have an issue with that?
No, it's fine.
So we're gonna do all of our public comments on the front. Okay. Board president reports. I just have a couple of things. Um, I had the opportunity to visit two schools since our last meeting. I was able to attend and visit Emerson, I believe it was the day before the... I, I loved walking through Emerson. It was, I got, I got to spend a morning there. Um, I saw every classroom, I believe, that was, um, in the school. I saw P E. I saw specialists working with kids and everything from small group to interactive large group classes, and it was just, it was great to see, um, all the opportunities, um, see just the interaction and the excitement of students and staff. So that was really wonderful. I also had the opportunity to visit Pleasant Hill. Again, another great opportunity. This time I had, I was able to see the FLESS program, and if board members remember, uh, we have two schools, I believe, that are piloting FLESS. Am I right in that? And that is the, um, the foreign language where it's in first grade right now, and it's like an immersion of, um, in there. I believe, maybe it's a language arts block or that, and so I did get to spend time there, um, where it was co-taught with the, I believe, a bilingual teacher, um, came in and was working on vocabulary, and, um, that was really great to see that, um, that happening as well. And that's happening in all first grade classrooms in those, um, pilot programs. Um, I did attend, um, I A S B holds a quarterly large district board president, uh, Zoom call. I, I attended that. Um, we had the I A S B fall division meeting that I know some of, some people were able to attend. Um, I didn't type up my notes yet, but I really was good, I was glad to see that if you got your, uh, quarterly, um, or monthly, um, I A S B, um, journal, they happen to have Brett Clark featured in here and pretty much what his entire presentation was. So if you weren't able to attend that, you can catch that in there. Um, I wanna congratulate Susan and Dave. They were also, um, recognized that, that night for their, um, master board level membership, or... So thank you for your, your efforts in continuing education. Um, next week is the triple I conference for new board members. One of the things that we do is we, um, like to be able to share with the community something that we've learned from that trip. So maybe we can take a few minutes, each of us, at the December board meeting and highlight something that we found was, you know, worthwhile and sharing, um, in regards to our, you know, continuing education. Um, that is all I have on my board report. Dr. Schuler?
Thanks, Mrs. Crabtree. A couple of things that I wanted to update the board on, uh, and then I will, uh, provide our, our monthly, uh, data update, uh, COVID data update, so, gentlemen, could you pull up that presentation superintendent report? Thank you. Um, so just a, a couple of recognitions that, uh, that I wanna start with. Number one, reminder that, uh, tomorrow's Veterans Day. Uh, each of our schools, uh, has activities planned. In honor of Veterans Day, uh, everything from, uh, ceremonies, assemblies, uh, to some, uh, activities that are happening offsite at the school. They vary a little bit, uh, school by school, but, um, we really appreciate, uh, the opportunity to recognize and, uh, celebrate, uh, our veterans, uh, tomorrow. Um, certainly in our community and beyond our community. November fifteenth, next week, is, uh, Illinois School, uh, School Board Member Appreciation Day. I think a number of the cards that, uh, like you got from, uh, the students at Lowell, uh, recognize, uh, your service and, and, uh, uh, their recognition of your service to the community. I often remind the community that, uh, while you're elected into this role, you're volunteering your time on behalf of the community, and so I, I greatly appreciate, um, your service and the time that, uh, you give to the, the community, especially as we approach November the fifteenth. I know both the City of Wheaton and City of Warrenville, um, will be recognizing that at their upcoming city council meetings as well to express their appreciation. Uh, Jennifer Merk, who, uh, is, uh, works with our Student Excellence Foundation, was recognized by an organization called Giving to Page. They do a Vala Palooza, uh, event where they recognize volunteers around the, the community, and they specifically recognize Jennifer for her time, um, with the Student Excellence Foundation. Um, Jennifer has been a part of the Student Excellence Foundation for a number of years, has really been, uh, instrumental in leading, uh, efforts, especially around the Crisis Food and Security Fund that became the Essential Needs Fund, was heavily involved in that, has done a lot, uh, with the staff recognition program as well as the grants programs, and so, uh, we're incredibly thankful for her time and service to the community and wanna share that recognition with you. Uh, at our high schools, we're coming, uh, to the conclusion of our fall sports, uh, season. We're happy to see, uh, a full, uh, boat of, uh, fall sports. All of our fall sports ran. We actually still have, uh, one of our football teams that, uh, continues to move forward in the playoffs in, uh, Wheaton North. Uh, a number of our sports in the past, uh, week brought, uh, closure to their, their season and enjoyed reading about, watching, uh, some of the, the amazing accomplishments of our students, both at Wheaton North and, uh, Wheaton Warrenville South. Incredibly proud of them. For our coaches and, uh, their efforts to support our athletic programs. Coupled with that, uh, a lot of our buildings have recently, uh, held or, uh, included some of their fall performing art. It's included band concerts, choir concerts, theater performances, and, uh, again, so good to see those opportunities, uh, in play. Our schools, and again, always amazed that the talent, uh, of our students in, in District two hundred and the talents of our staff lead in those programs. Um, just two more quick things. One, uh, we are in the process of finishing our fall safety drills. Uh, Dr. Kyle and the, uh, the district safety team oversee, uh, those, most of those drills. Actually, I think all of the drills are required by school code, um, but we have an amazing partnership with our first responders, especially our local police departments that support our efforts around, uh, safety and making sure that we're prepared for, uh, those events. And so, uh, thanks to, to Dr. Kyle and the safety committee for moving that forward. And then finally, uh, as Crabtree mentioned, some building visits. I've had, uh, some tremendous opportunities to get out and visit. Uh, a number of our, our buildings, spent time in classrooms, uh, had a, had a great opportunity to listen to some presentations in a third grade classroom, uh, at Lowell, had a chance to, uh, interact with some fifth grade students, and then actually, uh, I was at Sandberg and Washington, uh, also, um, watching some biography present. Uh, again, just, uh, tremendous, uh, to, to be out in, in our schools and seeing the work that our students and our teachers are doing. So, um, with that, I'm gonna move into our monthly, uh, COVID data update. This, uh, uh, will be uploaded to electronic school board here at the end of the meeting tonight. Board members, you have, uh, a copy of it. Board members, you have a copy of it. Similar data points that we've monitored each month that I'm going to run through for you and start with new cases. This, of course, is on our dashboard, so this is not new information. We upload it to our dashboard each week along with a daily case report. But you see as of today for this week, we're at 11 cases. That likely by the end of the week pushes us just a little bit higher than where we've been for the last couple of weeks. We were on a little trajectory down in terms of student cases. I think we've seen a little bit of a movement up, at least at this point in the week. Cases per 100,000, which is a metric that both CDC, PH, and our local health department point to often as they really look at where we are, has held pretty steady. It has not moved significantly. It's kind of fluctuated in the 120 up to 150, 160 range. Again, it's kind of come up and down, but hasn't really done a lot in the last couple of months. It stayed in a pretty similar spot. Cases per week, again, you actually already saw this data point on the previous graph just points to where we are at this point this week, where I mentioned, which is 11 cases for students, four for staff. Close contacts, again, something that the board has watched, monitored closely. The good news is that our in-school close contacts continue to be very low from the peak, I think, at the board meeting a couple of months ago when we had like 115, I think, in-school close contacts. We're down to four now. That actually got as low as zero in the last week and has come back up a little bit. And again, you'll see that here on the next chart. This graph just really shows what we've experienced in terms of in-school. Tests to stay, we have navigated 50 students through the Test to Stay protocol, still have 10 students that are currently a part of the Test to Stay protocol. We've had two positive tests out of all of the tests that we've administered. So that positivity rate is a positivity rate based on the number of tests that we've administered. So again, just as a reminder, a student and/or staff member that were in the Test to Stay protocol, test up to four times on days one, three, five, and seven of that protocol. So the aggregate number of tests that we've given exceeds 60 just based on where they've entered. And then our vaccination information. This with the board on a weekly basis, we're, we've been pretty steady in terms of our partial vaccination, high school and middle school. Full vaccination now actually does not lag significantly behind that. So again, as oftentimes, the full vaccinated dose is a little bit lower just because of the couple of weeks delay between doses, but it's actually now come up a little closer as you'll see on this next chart. Just a reminder, do continue to do outbreak investigations anytime that there are multiple cases within the same building. We are required to do an outbreak investigation to see if we see any evidence of epidemiological link. We've had a couple that the health department has come back and concluded there's a chance that there could be a link within our schools. But again, we continue to see very, very little evidence of any kind of transmission in our schools. And then just a final reminder that we do continue to look at that MIT Safe Hours tool and continue to be above that 18-hour threshold, which was kind of the lowest point that we were at any point last year. So with that, that's your monthly COVID data report. Can I answer any questions on that?
Any questions or comments for Dr. Schuler?
Just a comment. It's encouraging to me that the numbers of cases are flat, given that in the county overall, you know, they're, well, they started coming down, they've been trending up a little bit lately, so it's encouraging that we're not seeing the same thing.
Any other questions or comments for Dr. Schuler?
I just have a quick question. Are we going to be adding elementary to the partial vaccination?
When we have enough data to pull out, we'll certainly track that for you as well.
And that is voluntarily given to us by parents, correct? Or is that we pull that?
No, that information, we're able to pull it by zip code out of the system where they're tracked, not by name, but by zip.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay, moving on to public comments. In accordance with Board Policy 2.230, members of the public wishing to offer public comment have the opportunity to do so. A public comment signup sheet was made available until 7:00 PM. Board meetings are available for viewing via live stream on the district's YouTube channel. As with all comments, please be aware that it is the board's regular practice to not directly discuss, ask questions, or take action on public comments until the time has been taken to gather adequate information. The board is there to listen. Lack of action or a direct response following public comments does not imply any lack of interest in what is being shared. Per Board Policy 2.230, the time allotted for each person to speak during public comment may be shortened to two minutes to provide the maximum number of people an opportunity to speak. It looks like we can keep it at three minutes. To preserve the confidentiality, the board and its president request that items relating to either personnel or students be provided to the board privately or in writing for consideration in a future closed session if necessary. The board must protect the civility and decorum of the meeting. Please be respectful for the duties of the board, our district leadership team, and the democratic process in your public comments. Please include your name and whether you are a resident of the district. Please limit your comment to three minutes. Mr. Long will be timing the comments. Raise his hand at the three-minute mark and we ask you to stop. Please be factual and courteous and do not include statements that are personally disrespectful or condescending to board members or staff. I'm going to say the first name and then I'll say the second name so that you're ready to come up. So the first person is Heather Beck and then after Heather will be Kristi Bartels.
Oh, maybe that doesn't adjust. Good evening. I'm thankful tonight to be able to read these letters on behalf of a couple of students in our district. Every voice and all the feelings of our students matter, so it's a privilege to me to be able to read these letters. Looks like they worked hard on them. This is a former Lincoln student, first grader named Annabelle. And she says, Dear School Board Members, please don't make kids in school wear masks. They are uncomfortable. It's hard to hear the teacher and they make me cough. And this one, Dear Wheaton School Staff and Board. He says, Please, please make my school mask free. I hate it and we are not happy. And his name is Henry. Thank you.
Thank you. Next up is Kristi Bartels and after that is Elizabeth Cesarone.
Hi, I'm Kristi Bartels. I am a resident here. My son goes to Johnson Elementary School, so I'm a new mom. He's a kindergartner, half-day school. And my concern is that at Johnson, they don't do any like holiday parties and they don't have any parent like involvement or like room mom or leaders in the school. And so I have friends that have kids that are at Bauer and a couple of your other schools that are elementary schools that are all in your guys, all in the same district and they get to have three moms per party, they have Halloween parties, they're doing all of that stuff and I'm just wondering why I'm left out. Like I've always wanted to be that mom that was like involved and I feel like I should able to be involved and I'm not being involved and I just don't know why. I asked the assistant principal, but I didn't really get an answer. They told me I need to come to the board. So I will follow up with like an email to get a response. I'm just kind of concerned, like where's the rule from? Like, do you guys make the rules and we're all supposed to, they're all supposed to follow it? But then how come my school's, I feel like, the only one not doing their own thing? Thanks.
Thank you, Elizabeth Cesarone. And after that is Liliana Garlet.
Hello, I am Elizabeth and I attend Sandberg Elementary School. When are you going to let us show our faces? Why are we being punished? I can't ever concentrate when I can't breathe. My mask gets wet when I drink water and then I have a gross wet mask all day long. Why are you making kids fight with others about the vaccine? It is me and my parents' choice to decide if I get the vaccine, not yours. Please let us have the choice to wear a mask or not. Thank you.
Thank you. Next up is Liliana Garrett and then Alicia O'Connell.
Dear District 200, my name is Lily and I'm a second grader. I'm supposed to go to Sandberg School and enjoy learning and have fun with my friends. Instead, I have chosen to homeschool this year. You, the board, made masks optional before the year started and I was happy about that, but I still didn't want to go back to school. The thought of social distancing and not knowing when or if I'll have to quarantine made me feel sad and nervous. Then the mandate to mask everyone started. I'll be honest, I had an absolute meltdown, thinking about another year of not seeing the smiles on the faces of my friends and teacher, of not being able to breathe well and the thought of breathing in my own germs and carbon dioxide all day long. You do realize we're only supposed to breathe that stuff out, right? I spent the whole summer doing camps with other kids in the district. We were inside unmasked in groups of 100 to 300 people and we are just fine. In fact, there was only one time since June 10th that I've worn one. Anyway, I'm here today to stand up for all students. I was reading about a woman named Esther. She knew what was right and wanted to stand up for it, even if it meant that really bad things could happen to her. So here I am, being brave like Esther, speaking up for what's right and fair. I believe it's your turn to do the same. Enough is enough. It's time for you to stand up and be brave too. Sincerely, Liliana Garrett.
Thank you, Liliana. Next is Alicia O'Connell and Esther. Alicia O'Connell is Harold Longs.
Good evening. I am here to speak to you tonight about the continued masking of our children. I will not appeal to you on the basis of science or data or even common sense regarding the masking of children who are at a statistically negligible risk of serious infection from COVID. Those appeals have been largely ignored. This board makes decisions on the illegal mandates of our governor and the maniacal pursuit of covering our children's faces continues. I am a teacher and I have taught at the elementary and middle school levels for many years. I left teaching because I would no longer participate in the systematic stripping of a child's identity through forced face covering, nor would I insist, assist in perpetuating the lie that healthy children are sick and at risk of infecting others. Your own quarantine data proves that the school setting is not a source of transmission and infection. This year, I am able to choose when and where I want to work. I have had the privilege of talking to middle school students about how they feel about endless masking. For those who sit on this board and believe the totality of wellness consists of avoiding a virus and have consistently advocated for covering faces, I am addressing you. Congratulations. You have successfully infused fear and shame into the hearts and minds of our precious youth. I am regularly hearing from these students that they have embraced covering their face. Those who feel ugly can now hide behind a mask. Some are so used to wearing a mask that they are now embarrassed to show their face. Others are so afraid of contracting a cold, they feel the safety that a piece of cloth provides, albeit a hoax, is worth hiding their identity. When I began asking these students how they felt about face coverings, never did I imagine to hear such tragically bizarre responses. We have a generation of children who have been conditioned to normalize covering their face. I wonder if that bothers you or are you so driven by political ideology that you've managed to disregard the sanctity of a human face? Perhaps it gives you relief that children too have surrendered what it means to be human, to be created in the image of God with a unique identity captured in their face. After all, they are safe. Perhaps I should remind this board of the same truth that I remind these students. Faces were designed to be seen, not perpetually hidden. When I begin the class period, I ask whoever is comfortable to show me their "this is me" face. I want to see the individual behind the mask, the one who has a soul and a personality that is revealed in their unique face. Faces were created by God and they matter to Him. And even if for a brief moment, I want them to know their faces still matter to me too.
Next is Mr. Longs.
Thank you.
And then Rosario Lettenberger.
Good evening. Harold Longs, I'm a resident of District 200. I just want to make a couple of comments regarding tonight's HR report. I notice there's 500, 357 hired and then I see there was 557 resignations and 82 retirements for like 639 people. There's a 300 difference, but the head count didn't change in the report, so I'm just a little confused about that. And I wish somebody would discuss in the HR report the 350 fraudulent employment claims listed in the presentation. Now I'd like to go on and read a couple of letters that I picked up outside. The first one says, Now that a vaccine is out for the children, I demand to know what your mask optional date will be. If parents want to experiment with the vaccine for their children, they should be okay with experimenting with a mask optional school environment. I am so beyond appalled that the educators in this community hide behind unlawful government mandates as reasons to abuse children and disrupt their social, emotional, and educational needs. If you don't come up with a reasonable timeline to allow for unmasked kids to walk into your schools, resign immediately. Signed Katie. And she says, P.S., I have so much, I've lost so much trust in D-200 if we no longer have the children's needs at the center in what you decide. And now I've got another letter. I'm writing to you to tell you I'm very upset about how you get treated if you're not vaccinated. I don't think it is very fair anyone is treated different. I am not so, I get to be sent home if I get too close to someone who has COVID. This sucks and it's not fair. My friend had his vaccine and got to stay. My mom and me talk about the COVID vaccine and we choose it's not right for me and my doctor says it's okay. I want to go to school. I want to see my friends. I don't like, they can figure out I'm different. Please quit this. Another thing I want to say is I wish schools liked before. I hate how it's not. Please help make it go back, go back like lunch and other stuff is not the same. I miss it before. Thank you for reading my letter. My mom says I don't have to sign and it's signed by a Monroe eighth grader. Thank you.
Okay, next is Rosario, I think it's Lettenberger. And then after that is Nikki Johns.
Board of Education and Superintendent, with the now available vaccines for kids and parents who want them, or for all those who were against the mask choice policy at the beginning of this school year, claiming it was too risky to allow choice, now when are we allowing a mask choice in our schools? Our children who have had ongoing physical and psychological effects on their health due to wearing a mask for the entire school day, except for 30 minutes, require your action. Your inactivity or your disregard for these children is a disrespect to the oath to serve this community. It is a slap on the face to all these little voices who are clamoring for help but yet fall on deaf ears of this administration and this board specifically. You all, in conjunction with our failed local health department, must work to bring sane solutions that do not aggravate our students' physical and psychological health. Has the school added more carbon dioxide monitors to help identify where airflow is limited and viruses may more easily spread? Has this even been discussed? Has this even been discussed with the DuPage County Health Department? Or is it the only solution from the health department you're being instructed to carry on involve only masking of the students and adhering to vaccinations? Adding ventilation, proper hand washing, respiratory etiquette by covering our sneeze, staying home if obviously sick, emphasizing healthy diets and exercise must still be our way to keep our school community in good shape. Hear the voices of our students, review our local data on COVID-19, follow logic, stop following mandates that are based on wishful hopes but are unreliable scientifically. New COVID-19 cases among youth is minimal in our DuPage County. Proven schools are not a source of spread. Furthermore, schools in Illinois who have gone with a mask optional policy have seen a drastic decrease in cases at these schools, proving that masks might actually be causing more harm than benefiting our students. District 200, I ask you to think logically, empathize with our students who have had adverse effects from the COVID-19 mitigations. I ask you to allow choice regardless of vaccination status in our schools. Thank you.
Next up is Nikki Johns and after that is Brian Treblehorn.
Hi, everybody. First off, my name is Nikki Johns. I'm a grandmother. I here, I mean, I live here in Wheaton, so I'm also a taxpayer. I am obviously not a speaker, so forgive me for that. I scribbled all this down in the car. And so anyway, my number one is I have a few thoughts about the Portrait of a Graduate program. First off, how many of you guys have your doctorates? Just do this. Yep, good, thank you. Dr. Schuler? Yep, I'll bet. Okay. My biggest question is, with the Portrait of a Graduate, they get half academics and half all the other stuff. If you guys, when you were all in school, got half the academics, would any of you have a doctorate today? That's my number one thing. My question, oh, I did that one. Okay, so the other one is values. Values was on that one list. Who's going to teach the values? Under this program, I personally think values are honesty, integrity, care, good character. I wish that you as board members were completely honest and would acknowledge that Portrait of a Graduate can't possibly teach students enough academics to produce highly educated children and young adults when they're only being taught academics, reading, writing, arithmetic, half the time. The rest of their day will be focusing on things that parents should be teaching their children. Courage is another one that's value. As board members, I wish you all would have the courage to stand up to any program that isn't first and foremost structured to teach the students the basic academic skills, reading, writing, arithmetic, algebra, history, all those things. Academics, academic achievement should be number one. That's your job, academics. Number two, or another one, integrity. As board members, I wish you all had the integrity to do the right thing because it's the right thing to do. As a parent and a grandparent, I teach, I taught my kids that there is no right way to do something wrong. Please listen to that. No right way to do something wrong. Another one is character. I wish you all would have the character, the strength, of strength, courage, integrity, and honesty to admit how wrong this Portrait of a Graduate is. By, by that nice little scale that you had in that slide program, only one of those was academics. The others was all this other fluff. How can teachers teach these values when our school board members don't display the values themselves? I am not trying, let me say this, I am not saying these things to verbally attack our board members. I say these things because I want as a board, I only, wait, let me, let's see. I say these things only because I believe that those character values are part of the
Thank you, Ms. Johns. Next is Brian Treblehorn. And after that is Jessica Banasek.
And I want you guys to have the courage to show your values.
Thank you.
All right, good evening. Not a public speaker, but I'm here, so I wrote all this down at work. Back in July, you voted to make masks optional. For many families, this was a joyous day. My children were actually excited to go back to school. My son, who has only experienced schooling with masks, was especially thrilled. His older sister even told him that this is how school is supposed to be. He has been in speech therapy and he was excited to be able to go back to school to see his fellow students and teacher's mouths, thinking it could help him improve his speech. Instead, our governor went back on his word and decided to overrule you guys, the voters, and force masks. My kids cried and they hated returning to school like a lot of kids in the district. The governor used threats to force you to change and overturn your previously passed mask optional policy. We now know his threats were illegal and toothless. Numerous districts in Illinois are mask optional. They fought against the governor and won. They won for their kids and the parents. We voted you into the school board to fight for us and most importantly, our kids. Masks no longer have a place in our schools. A vaccine is there for parents who think it's right for their kids. Infection rates in Illinois are pre-pandemic levels. Positive rate in Illinois is around 2%. A study released by the CDC in May 2021, using data from November 2020 to December 2020 when COVID was raging, stated, and I quote, "The lower incidence in schools that required mask use among students was not statistically significant compared with schools where mask use was optional." Rate of infection for schools that had masks optional in that study was 0.762%. Currently, not a single school that is mask optional in Illinois is on ISBE's probation list. All have full recognition. There is no reason for you not to honor the vote you made back in July and to honor your word, to give choice back to the parents and the children of your district. Thank you.
Thank you. Next up is Jessica Banasek and then after that is Amy Kipfer.
Good evening. My name is Jessica Banasek and I am a resident of the district. I first off like to thank you all, be the lone voice here thanking you all for sticking with the mask policies. It is clear that there is low spread in schools and I believe and it's been shown that the masking is a huge part of that. So I really thank you all for adhering to the guidance from the American Academy of Pediatrics and IDPH. So please continue that. I also just try and keep this brief. School boards and state legislators have been roiled this year by demonstrations and attacks against the policies for COVID mitigations, anti-racist education, and truth telling in schools, designed by right-wing strategists and carried out on the ground by parents. By flooding public meetings, elected officials, email inboxes, and the news media with a frenzy of fear for the children, the right wing has created a national narrative that white parents don't want their children to learn about racism. But many parents, like myself, believe that our children must learn the truth about how history and present-day systems keep racism in place. Anti-racist parents don't want the same whitewashed version of American history and culture that they were taught to continue. The purpose of public education in a public school system is not to teach children only what some parents want them to learn. It is to teach them what a modern, inclusive society needs them to learn. We need this, we need inclusive education. We need social, emotional learning. We need diversity education for our LGBTQI population. We need these things. And we, this anti-CRT, anti, you know, we don't want this, is the minority. We want, the parents of this area, the majority of parents in this area, want a modern education for their children. Please support culturally responsive education in District 200. Support inclusive, the people in the audience. Support inclusive sexual education in District 200 and support inclusive literature in District 200. Thank you.
Next up is Shannon Lyman and after that is, oh, I'm sorry, Amy Kipfer, I'm sorry. I made a mistake. And then is Shannon Lyman.
Good evening, school board and District 200 staff. I am Amy Kipfer. I am a parent of two currently un-enrolled in District 200. At the last school board meeting, we talked a lot about the A-plus rating our school received. I am sorry to say, but that A-plus rating to me seemed a little bit like everybody getting a trophy at a Little League end of the year banquet. In our district right now, kids reading and doing math at level is 50%. That to me is not A-plus. That is failing. As you walked in tonight, you saw a display of shoes. This was not anything other than a peaceful protest from students in our district. All those shoes belonged to students. They all also wrote letters themselves, which I have here. Let's see. What they have to say is not an A-plus rating. I am definitely, it is definitely a display of actually failing our students. When I moved to Wheaton several years ago, I was very proud to say that my kids would go to Wheaton schools. I am not proud to say that anymore. I actually now refuse to send my children to school because of the lack of education and the toxin, toxic environment. I want to use the rest of my time to read some of what these students have said. We have spent a lot of time at board meetings talking about stuff that seems minute when kids are suffering and lacking education. Instead of focusing on you as elected officials who voluntarily ran for your position, if you should get childcare reimbursement, maybe we can focus on the 15,000 kids in our district who are making and making sure not one of them is missed. Dear Board Education and Superintendent, a normal day for me starts with waiting outside the door of a schoolyard. Even though no one has to wear a mask, it has become a habit to wear them all the time. I don't like wearing a mask at school because it is very hard to read. It makes it difficult to breathe and it gives me a headache. It goes against my religious beliefs, et cetera. I wa- I do not want people segregated by a vaccine status. I don't want people who are vaccinated to be able to not wear a mask when unvaccinated people have to. This would be one of the worst scenarios for children. We should be able to allow choices for those who still want to wear a mask and don't. Please respect my religious beliefs and our choice. Only four states require masking in our country. Illinois is one of them. Now that you have a vaccine available, when are you unmasking the kids? An Edison student. It feels like my teachers care more about masks than anything else. Masks feel gross when it is hot. Hi, cus, District 200.
Thank you, Ms. Kipfer. Next is Shannon Lyman. After that is Mark Condon.
I would like to give these. Hi, my name is Shannon Lyman. I'm a mom of District 200. I'm just here to read a letter from a neighbor that is a student as well in this district. But before I do that, I know before we saw some statistics. So just a quick question, like if we're benchmarking, so I think that the numbers were this time in the latest week that there were 11 students that had COVID cases and there were four teachers. Are we benchmarking that pre-COVID to how that compares to the flu? So just a hypothetical, just kind of throwing that out there, but I'm just kind of curious how we're like, I, I get like where we are with COVID, but at the same time, like what are we comparing that to from pre-COVID conditions? So, dear District 200, I disagree that having a mask is a good idea. The reason why I think having a mask is a bad idea is because they are uncomfortable, worthless, and don't even work. For example, teachers and other people make you get in trouble for having your mask down even though they don't even work. Why I say masks don't work is because your shirt over your nose is the same thing. They don't allow that, though. If you really believe that having a mask is a good idea, then you can wear it. Not other people who don't believe in masks, me. It means that you will be forced to wear a mask. They are basing, basically telling you, you have to wear it. And I strongly believe that having to do, to wear a mask everywhere is a terrible idea. So again, just reiterating, these are the children that just really do not see the benefit in this and, you know, I, I've stood before here, before all of you numerous times. I feel like this district has been very courageous in the sense of giving our, the majority of the people and taking in the health benefits and what the county measures are. And I just continue to ask you, I know that the governor has a mandate against our district, but I just challenge you to also challenge the governor and how this mask mandate really makes sense based on the numbers that you continue to look at. So thank you.
Next is Mark Condon. After Mark Condon is Lori Condon.
Hello, board. I'm a former District 200 teacher and I'm just here representing one of the student voices that, that you passed in the way in. So I'm going to read it verbatim. Some it may make sense, some it may not, but here it is. Please pause for a moment before reading this note to ponder that for each and every one of the pairs of shoes that you saw walking in tonight to the building, a student is represented. A student who has a name, a family, a personality, needs and emotions. Each student needs to know that their voice is being heard and that they are being taken seriously and not dismissed. This is the third school year that has been negatively affected by Illinois COVID mitigation strategies. The goalposts have been moved in Illinois more times than we can count. Currently, there is no plan to remove masks. Our kids' faces are being covered daily. It is breaking our hearts and it is breaking their spirits. Our kids deserve to breathe fresh air. Why are individuals of all ages, sizes, backgrounds, and health conditions able to choose to do all of life unmasked while our kids are forced to have their faces covered every day in school? When will you stand up for the kids if our district can say enough is enough? Schools are not sources of significant spread. The vaccine has been made available to all who want it. DuPage County is over 66% fully vaccinated. DuPage is over 78% vaccinated with at least one dose. We have a mental health crisis that is an overwhelmingly more dangerous threat to our children and teens than COVID is or ever will be. As you know, kids are not severely impacted when they contract COVID-19, nor are they hospitalized or dying. The majority of hospitalizations for those 20 and under were for factors, conditions other than COVID-19. Yet District 200 has continued to put the heavy, heavy burden on the shoulders of our youngest members of the population. District 200 School Board, you possess the control to make decisions locally about what is best for our district. Please be reminded that Dr. Jeff Schuler articulated at the school board meeting July 14th, 2021, that control belongs to local school boards. No laws changed regarding this between July 14th and shortly after August 4th, when the governor announced a statewide mask mandate. Dr. Schuler highlighted that it is appropriate to include choice as it relates to local control. July 14th, CUSD 200 Board Meeting. Students, staff, and teachers who wish to wear masks are able to continue to do so. COVID will likely be a seasonal sickness as are other respiratory viruses. Individuals must continue to determine their own risk based on their own personal situations and factors. This must be decided by individuals and parents, not by those who are not health professionals and who are unaware of personal risk factors. Currently, if one looks at DuPage County Dashboard, our transmission level is categorized as high, which is a joke. As of today, November 10th, there are only 150 positive cases per 100,000. That's not even close to 1%. When is enough enough? Unsigned.
Thank you, Mr. Condon. Next up is, last is Lori Condon.
Hello, I'm Lori Condon, the proud grandmother of Lily Garalt, who spoke tonight and wrote every word of her speech. I'm reading a letter that was written by a freshman female at Wheaton Warrenville South High School. And she says, "Mask my body, tell me what to do with it. Abolish my self-esteem. Decipher the subtle words exchanged on the position of the muzzle guarding my face. I am not a dog and I will refuse to be treated like one. I will not continue to wear a muzzle. It is so hard to understand the words and education being passed on to me. In gym, I struggle from fainting and passing out. I cannot meet the requirements needed to get a good grade without stopping to catch my breath and getting reprimanded for my mask being down. I don't want to walk the halls of the school and look at the info boards and see, mask up, support tight- Support tiger safety. Wheaton Warrenville students, mask up.' I want to be able to converse with my fellow peers. I want to have a voice. It is ridiculous that at restaurants, when customers are seated, they don't have to wear a mask, but when we are for eight hours, they must be up over their nose. I'm sick of being brainwashed with announcements and reminders to pull up my mask. Homecoming was a joke. In the mosh pit, it was so crowded and sweaty, no mask, but as soon as you stepped inside the building, the masks had to go up." And that's how she concluded it.
Thank you. That ends our public comment. Next up is Consent Agenda. First item is acceptance of gift to Wheaton North High School Fund a Falcon program. Approval of bills payable and payroll. Approval of minutes, October 13th, 2021, open, and approval to destroy recordings of closed sessions prior to 20, June 2020, as allowable by law. Approval of personnel report to include employment, resignation, retirement, and leave of absence of administrative, certified, classified, and non-union staff. Are there any board members that want an item removed from the consent agenda?
Chris, I have a comment. Is that fine? Just based on a question that came to us, just to make it clear.
Are you removing or just wanting a comment?
Just a comment.
Okay, so let's let Dr. Schuler do his.
Yeah. I don't have any additional.
He doesn't have any comments? Okay, then go ahead.
Okay. Regarding the approval to destroy recordings of closed sessions prior to June 2020 as allowable by law, just to make it clear, because I think there's a little misperception, the content of closed sessions is very specific and limited items that it's pertaining to, and that we are following the legal channels of what we should be doing. I think there was just some misperception that came to me regarding what can and can't be said in a closed session, so there are very strict guidelines what can. Just wanted to make that clear.
Thank you. Are there any other questions or comments regarding consent?
I have a comment. I just, I just want to take a minute and acknowledge the retirement of Stephanie Mangini from Jefferson. I have been holding my breath every time I read that personnel report, because I thought it might be coming. And I just want to say, she and her staff changed our family's lives for so much the better, and she was such a warrior in getting Jefferson built over, through three referendums. And I had the great honor of working with her through two of those, and it's very bittersweet, but I just want to thank Mrs. Mangini for her years of service and to say that I wish her the very, very best in her retirement.
Any other questions or comments from board members regarding consent? Okay. Hearing there are none, I need a motion and a second to approve the consent agenda as presented.
So moved.
Moved by Mr. Paulson.
Second.
Seconded by Dr. Yaboa. Mrs. Hutchinson, can you please call the roll?
Mr. Paulson?
Yes.
Dr. Yaboa?
Yes.
Leifner?
Yes.
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 Yes. Okay, we are on to action items. Approval to post the 2022, 2023, and 2023, 2024 calendars for public review and comment. I see Dr. Kyle heading up there.
Thanks for giving me an opportunity to present the proposed 22, 23, and 23, 24 calendars. I wanted to share with the board just some thank-yous. It's never easy in a unit district to get three different levels to come together to agree on calendars, so I wanted to just spend a little bit of time thanking the committee. Kim Swanson, Sarah Davis, Pearl Webb, Leah Bryce, Phil Caucasi, Kirsten Anderson, Alexia Ellett, Bridget Moore, Ryan Buck, Penny Coyle, and Bryce Can. We met on three different occasions, and our goal was a little bit different than other calendar committees. If you remember as a board, one of the things we did back in 2018, you may have been a parent, you may have been a part of the board, but we did a survey about trying to end first semester before winter break. So this committee, even though it's their, some of the people's first year, we looked at that data from the calendar, from the calendar committee back then. So we got feedback from staff and faculty on this two-year proposal. We analyzed the survey results from the 2018 calendar survey. We had representatives from all three levels, administration and staff. We discussed the pros and cons of various calendars. We researched surrounding districts. We like to look at other school districts like 203 and 204. And then we wanted to come to a consensus so we could propose a two-year calendar for public comment and viewing. Just going back to 2018, this is before COVID, there was a push, and we had a survey that went out. 2,738 parents, parents and staff responded. 80.8% wanted finals or first semester done before winter break. You could see the breakdown from different levels, but that's where we were. And at the time, back in 2018, the board had me ask the high school students where they landed. They were at 75.9% wanted finals before break. And then, does your choice reflect reduction of stress? 92.6% said yes. That was kind of the driving force back in 2018. We saw a lot of our surrounding high school and unit districts finishing first semester before winter break. So, that's what we wanted to use to kind of bring these two calendars to all of you. One of the things we did notice, we had members look at 203, 204, 303, and 304. That's Naperville, Indian Prairie, St. Charles, and Geneva. They do end first semester before winter break. And then this school year, the original calendar was supposed to have winter break, finals before winter break. First semester was supposed to end. But due to COVID-19 and ending last year's school year on June 10th, we proposed a more traditional calendar for this year. A Wednesday start to the school year is preferred. That was one piece of feedback that all three levels really agreed. They liked the Wednesday. Faculty and staff and administration did not want to start any earlier than the two calendars that you have in front of you. The one for next year, I believe it's August 17th, that's early enough. Nobody really wanted to start August 10th. There are some school districts that do, but we did not want to do that. Elementary, middle, and high all like the last day of school in May. Feedback varies across levels on start dates in August. Some like it early, some like it late. It's kind of a, it's always kind of a mixed bag there. We went pretty detailed with the original calendar for this school year, and middle school's feedback was they wanted the second quarter to extend into January so that those elective classes could have the same amount of days in each quarter. And then, elementary, middle school, and high school for the 22, 23 winter break decided the break would start on Friday, December 23rd, and having the teacher institute on January 9th when we come back. There's a couple of highlights for the calendars. Just wanted to walk you through it. The first one is 22, 23. Start on a Wednesday, semester break on December 22nd, winter break December 23rd to 1-9. Institute day is on 1-9. It's a workday for high school, middle, but for elementary, it's a teacher institute day. Semester one is 83 days, and semester two is 92 days. When we started this work back in 2018, we thought we could handle up to about 10 days difference between the two semesters. There are a lot of things in second semester at the high school with AP exams and other things that come up that do limit the days in second semester, so we felt like this landed at our target. And then EC 12, last day of school in the first calendar is May 31st, 2023. Second calendar, and I will just have a caveat on this. There's a couple things that you use in DuPage. One of them is the countywide institute day, and that's usually the date in March. I was able to call the county for 23, 24. They were able to tell me where they thought that landed. They didn't have spring break yet, so there might be an adjustment to spring break, because in DuPage County, we try and make sure all the schools do have spring break. But that's the only caveat that's up in the air right now. Semester ends for the 23, 24 calendar, that's a full week. It would end on December 22nd. Winter breaks the 23rd to the 8th. Elementary, institute, middle, and high would be January 8th. Semester one is 84 days, and semester two is 91. And then the last day of school for that calendar year is actually May 24th. It says May 29th on here, but that should be May 24th. I apologize about that mistake. Our committee is asking the board to pose, to post the proposed calendars for public review and comment. Any questions at all from the board?
Questions for board members? Want to start?
I don't really have any questions. I've been on the board a while, and this is, was a goal for the board for a long time, and we were excited a few years ago to be able to implement it, and largely driven by the needs, the desires for high school students to not have to spend their holiday break worrying about finals in a couple weeks. So, I'm glad to see we're back on track. And it's always, in August, I always am kind of envious of the neighboring school districts that start a little bit earlier and they finish in May while we're still in school for another five to 10 days, depending on the year. So I fully support this change, and I hope, look forward to any comments we get back from the community.
Other questions or comments from board members?
I have a couple questions. First, I'm curious, just the history of why early childhood and kindergarten doesn't start on the same day as.
Yeah, that's a good question. And, you know, I wasn't here for that decision, but the answer I've gotten from many people that have been in the district a lot longer than me, and Dr. Salagi can correct me if I'm wrong, but the point is, is you've got the first graders through fifth graders, you want all hands on deck, and you want to make sure they're taking care of everything. And then, once that's taken care of, then the next day you bring in the kindergarteners. And EC has always been kind of lumped in with kindergarten. So that was the feedback I got. Dr. Salagi, I don't know if you.
I wonder if that's something that we should consider being valuable or not. Does that.
I would say that it is, at least from our principals' perspective, and I think their ability to make sure that we have not only ample resources for day one to support our 1 through 5 students, but then can have a very intentional focus on kindergarten students on that day. At least, what I've heard from our principals is they still value that separation by day.
Thank you. Couple more questions. So I, initially looking at the calendar, I am not one that likes asymmetry. I like to see things a little more symmetrical, but I understand, and talking with some teachers as well, the reason for it. I'm curious, and I guess you sort of spoke to it in your presentation about middle school not ending their second quarter before the winter break. Personally, I think having those four days when they come back and then ending the quarter doesn't seem super valuable. I, I know that there are students in middle school, eighth graders, who do follow the high school schedule for math and science, so them taking their finals consistently with the high school students probably wouldn't happen then.
If it's a high school course, they'll work through that and make sure that they're all taking the finals at the same time. This, the middle school extending that quarter was more for the elective courses. When we approved the calendar that was supposed to be for this year, middle school elective teachers really wanted to make sure there was the same amount of days for each quarter, because there are some units that they do, and if they weren't, they would miss some of those units.
Okay. I guess my puzzlement is for the high school classes that are semester-long, I think missing nine days on one end and having nine. It just seems, I mean, I know there's no perfect answer.
Yeah. I will tell you.
But it seems more, and forgive me for saying, important for some of the high school courses, the AP courses, to have that time, but then the middle school electives, like, it just doesn't.
Yeah, so I will tell.
I'm trying to make it make sense.
Sorry. I will tell you, we, when we looked at that several years ago, we actually went course by course to identify which courses are actually impacted at the high school level. So one thing that I'll remind you is regardless of instructional time, even if it's a first semester AP course, the student's not taking the test until end of the year. So that's not, they're, they're not taking the test immediately upon completion. There really are not a ton of semester courses, and those that we looked at, again, in working very specifically with the teachers, we felt that it was a manageable adjustment for the benefit we get out of ending the semester before the break. So, that's a fair concern, and I guess I just want to tell you, three years ago, that was looked at very in-depth to the level of which courses does this impact, and can we work with that.
Okay. Thank you. That's helpful. I appreciate it. One other thing that struck me, just having been in the district for some time, is, I'm not exactly sure, although I probably should, when we switched from 180 days to 175, but then I decided to look it up, and I think the state requirement is 176. So where's that extra day?
Parent-teacher conferences. So there, the required calendar is 180 days. You're allowed a certain number of institute days. You can have up to four institute days in there. And you also can take parent-teacher conference days, especially if you're conferencing in the evenings, right? You're conferencing at off-hours. That's, that's a recognized day in the calendar.
Okay. I may have read it incorrectly, but I'll send you what I, because I'm unclear, because what I read is you needed to schedule 185 days in case you couldn't meet the 176. So maybe I'm misunderstanding that allocation, so thank you.
No problem. I'd be happy to send you that, too, where that is.
Thanks. The only other comment, just as a parent, not as, well, as board member or parent, the putting the workday at the end, the tail end of the January holiday, that's not something that I would choose, but that's all. Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other questions or comments regarding calendar? Dr. Yaboa?
Thank you for this presentation, Dr. Kyle. I would like to ask six rhetorical questions regarding the proposed October 10th, 2022, and October 9th, 2023, no school, all grades, Columbus Day/ Indigenous Peoples' Day in relation to district purposes outlined in the mission of School District 200, Vision 2022, and the Portrait of a Graduate work. To be very clear, these are not questions that I expect you to answer right now. I'm asking them for the benefit of reflective thinking for the district, especially in the month leading up to the approval of these calendars. One, does the District 200 Administration recognize the impact of holidays, statues, and other memorials on shaping school culture, which in turn shapes student experiences and outcomes? Two, does the District 200 Administration consider celebrating extreme violence, theft, genocide, and dehumanization to be in line with the study of social science to help students develop the ability to make informed and reasoned decisions for the benefit of the global society in which they live? Three, does District 200 Administration affirm the accurate telling of history and recognize the impossibility of discovering land already inhabited? Four, does the District 200 Administration take into consideration the perspectives of indigenous people regarding this particular calendar event? Five, could maintaining this District 200 calendar event unintentionally support a myth of US exceptionalism that could undermine district efforts to create diverse, inclusive schools for all children? Lastly, does this calendar event advance the vision and mission of District 200 goals? And if it does not, must it remain despite state-level support?
Anybody else, questions or comments regarding calendar?
Just want to say thank you for all the work put into it. I know this is a hard task.
It's never easy.
Yeah, I know it's a very hard task. So I really appreciate the work put into it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Just one quick for me, Dr. Kyle. It's just a, first off, thank you. I, I know that I was one of the people who was pushing for the finals before break. I know that there has been some talk about what finals week would look like. Maybe that is, that we're looking at possibly not having it be so spread out. Am I, am I correct in that idea? So that maybe that week is, we're not, we're not losing even more days for. So that maybe that week is, we're not, we're not losing even more days for instructional days because we were doing...
Yeah, certainly the high schools have continued to look at the format. I think already they actually shrunk it by a day, meaning they're still giving the finals, but not spread out over as many days as they previously were to preserve some instructional time.
And part of that reason is we're exploring other forms of assessment that are not needed for those kinds of cramming for finals kinds of things.
There's a committee right now talking about finals and discussing that, but for this year, we went from four to three. So I know that that's one less day, getting it a little more compact and looking at how the assessment is.
Great.
Melissa, am I missing anything with that?
No, but Dr. Kyle, let me just clarify. There's not a committee necessarily, they're not studying eliminating finals, just looking at the nature of summative assessment and recognizing that, well, a final may be appropriate in some places, a performance-based assessment may be more appropriate based on discipline course.
Finals will still be there.
Thank you.
I have one more. I'm sorry. One more question?
Yes.
Sorry, and this is very simple. Does the transition program follow the K or 1 through 12 calendar or the starting date early?
Yeah, transition follows the, usually the transition follows the high school.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay. I need a motion and a second to approve the posting of the 2022-2023 and 2023-2024 calendars for public review and comment as presented.
So moved.
Second.
So moved by Mrs. Booton, second by Mr. Long. Mrs. Hutchinson, will you please call the roll?
Yes.
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 Yes. Okay, we move on to oral reports. The 2021 Property Tax Levy Revenue Recapture Public Act 102-0519. Dr. O'Keefe?
Good evening. Before I jumped into the presentation, which would just be a few minutes long, I wanted to read a specific summary to you to give you some oversight on what this new property tax law is, and then I can dive into some bullet points. So the act, which is Public Act 1020519, was signed back in August. It amends PTEL, and again, PTEL is our property tax extension limitation law, to provide that a taxing district's levy will automatically be increased each year to recapture property tax refunds made in the prior 12 months arising from a PTAB appeal, which is an appeal that goes to the state when somebody disagrees on how their property has been assessed, a tax objection suit, something that would go through the courts, or a certificate of error that reduces a property's assessed value. Because this act was placed in the PTEL section of the property tax code, it appears to apply only to taxing districts covered by PTEL, which includes District 200. Under the new act, honor before November 15th of each year, the county treasurer will certify each covered taxing district's aggregate property tax refunds for the preceding 12 months, and that timeframe is November 1st through October 31st. The county treasurer will then extend the recapture levy based on the certified amounts of the property tax refunds. The act specifically provides that for purposes of PTEL, the taxing district's most recent aggregate extension base shall not include the prior year's recapture levy. Thus, this recapture levy will not be included in the subsequent year's tax cap calculation. In addition, the act, as it's designed today, does not give the Board of Education the discretion to decline or abate this new supplemental extension. So again, just what this act is, so for the benefits of our whole community, because we're all impacted by this, it's an automatic tax levy increase related to refunds that were issued after taxes were paid for a prior 12 months, and those prior 12 months, again, are November 1 through October 31st. It is an automatic levy increase that's applied by the county extension tax officials each year, and as I mentioned, the increase equals the amount of the aggregate property tax refunds paid for by the district in the prior year for certain types of refunds. The way refunds work is when there is a refund that has been approved at any level, that refund offsets any specific tax payments that we receive from the county. Public Act 102059 did come from Senate Bill 508. This is a description of what it is, and it has created Section 1823. I won't go through this because it's the same information as I presented, but this is the new piece of the act itself. So again, what happens? So our county treasurer is supposed to, we have not received that data yet, but by November 15th, so next week, should be providing us with a certified amount of refunds. If the website is accurate, specific to the district, we'd be looking at $257,000. Those refunds, again, are all from either certificates of error, court orders, or PTAB decisions. And again, all of these refunds are related to property taxes that have been paid, but then assessments have been changed and appeals have been verified either at the county level or at the PTAB board at the state level. What will happen though, is we anticipate, it's the first time, we haven't seen it yet for sure, is that there'll be a separate line item added by the county clerks. And again, this will not function or fall into our tax levy. This is outside the tax levy. This will not be a part of our discussion next month. It will happen automatically at the county level, but it is something to be aware of as a whole. What we think an example could look like is here, where there will be additional line items on our tax bills that show specific prior-year adjustments related to this public act. Now, one thing that is, has been initiated by Representative Zaluzki out of Riverside is a trailer bill. That trailer bill is House Bill 4130. Right now, it's sitting in the Rules Committee. What 4130 does is actually repeals Public Act 1020519. The rationale behind it is that this additional tax to recapture prior-year refunds should be set up in a way that allows for local choice. So Representative Zaluzki, well, the bill is not clean at this point. There was no action taken during the veto session, and we might anticipate some action potentially happening this coming spring during the regular session. It's, right now, the existing bill is, this is a mandate, you don't have a choice to do anything. The House Bill 4130 will repeal it in full, but there are discussions that are happening at the state level that potentially would change this House bill if moved forward to allow boards to have a choice on whether or not you want to accept this additional recapture levy, abate it, or just decline it outright. So again, this doesn't impact, and will not be discussed during our tax levy next month. It's outside of the tax levy, but because it will show up on all of our tax bills when we see them the next time around, I wanted to make sure that you and the public was aware of it. Any questions?
Questions for Dr. O'Keefe? Thank you.
No, I just have one question. I just want to clarify what statement you just made. So when each individual property tax homeowner sees your bill, there's going to be this extra line?
If there were refunds specific to that public body, yes.
So it would show up as a added tax to the taxpayer?
Correct.
Based on decisions that were not anything to do with our decisions?
Correct.
Okay, just want to clarify that.
Thank you. Next up is student learning feature. Dr. Schuler, any questions?
Yeah, no, Mrs. Miranda is coming up, so I just want to introduce Danielle Moran this year as a reminder for the board and community. Last year, Danielle oversaw our elementary virtual academy. So actually, last year oversaw probably our biggest, it was our biggest elementary school. As she's, we've moved into this year, she has continued to do work overseeing any of our remote needs, so we have a very small number of students that have continued to learn virtually this year, as well as some students that have needed to on a short-term basis, and she's continued to oversee that work along with doing some work in our curriculum department. She's been instrumental in looking at our reading and math programs and some important curriculum work. Has Danielle tonight to provide for the board an update on some of the lessons that we learned last year from some of our remote learning opportunities there? I think some advancements, especially in technology, that we've been able to learn from and carry forward and continue to apply. So Danielle.
Thank you for the opportunity to speak tonight. I'm excited to share the student learning feature with you that will focus on some of the digital tools and key takeaways we learned last year in virtual learning that have carried over with us into this school year. Our virtual teachers worked incredibly hard last year, and I had the chance to connect with our former virtual teachers recently, where I posed two questions to them. The first question was, what was your biggest takeaway or the most important thing you learned last school year? And the second was, how did the pandemic change your teaching for the better? Today, I'll be sharing with you the big ideas of things we've learned from virtual learning that have stuck with us into classrooms this year. The first is innovation. Teachers created new ways to get to learning. We understood that if we couldn't do things as usual in a virtual environment, we needed to be intentional about learning. One teacher shared that teaching virtually opened my eyes to the many ways that students can share thinking and interact with one another. Students who are quiet in class discussions were willing to share their thinking when they could type it in a chat, create a graphic, complete a Google form, and more. The second is adapt. Flexibility and versatility in virtual learning were key. In virtual learning, things don't always go as planned, just like in regular classrooms, and we found ways to creatively problem-solve, which changed our thinking and approach. One teacher said, "I learned that flexibility was vital in the digital learning environment." Staff problem-solved and made adaptations. In the digital environment, we paved the way using new ideas. We stepped out of our comfort zone in order for learning to be implemented. The third is student engagement. We connected with students by connecting with families. Our students who engaged in our lessons found success. One teacher shared that engagement was the biggest predictor of success. The more students engaged, the more successful they were. Engagement also provided opportunities for fun, and staff found ways to make learning interactive and enjoyable. Another teacher shared, "Last year, I had more fun with my kids than any other year, and they reaped huge rewards. My students grew immensely in all areas. They stayed engaged and wanted to come to class each day. I enjoyed my year more than ever." The fourth is digital tools. We learned new digital tools that carried over into our teaching spaces this year. Exploration using new tools was one way to achieve active engagement. One teacher shared, "My biggest takeaway was learning all of the technology." It has been amazing to use and balance tangible math tools, games, and books with online resources. It helps support student choice and student learning. Another teacher shared how great their students excelled at using digital tools and the new skills they developed. Students are very tech-savvy and incredibly resilient. When given support, students can excel at learning despite the challenges. The last is connections, and this relates to collaboration between staff and relationships between the home and school. Teachers work together and form meaningful connections with students and families. One teacher said, "Working as a team with different staff from the district as well as students' families can really make an impactful difference." And purposefully cultivating supportive relationships with parents is crucial for student success and engagement. In remote, I felt I was more aware of the students' home life. Those connections made were vital to targeting my teaching. So I have a short video of four of our former virtual teachers and their thoughts on how, what they learned last year has impacted their teaching in their classrooms this year.
Hi, Ms. Gates here at Lydier Computer Garden, and I wanted to say that Virtual Academy was a great experience for me because I was able to really hone my craft speed and just really focus on targets and exactly what my kindergarteners needed, and it also just helped me get super organized curricularly in this booking sequence. And my team was amazing, and we collaborated so much in computer garden, and we just did a lot of common planning. We shared more than I'd ever shared. We had like a master spreadsheet, our spreadsheets, and constantly adding things to it and sharing really great materials. And it was fun to see the diversity of buildings. That was something that I loved about me is that I got...
Hi, my name is Beth Trapp, and I taught first grade through Virtual Academy last year. This year, I'm teaching second grade in person here at Lydier. And a resource that I became very familiar with last year was the digital version of Literacy Footprints. I used it for my small guided reading groups last year. This year, while I'm seeing students for guided reading face-to-face, I do use the digital version of Literacy Footprints to provide my students with a digital book box they can use during independent reading time, and I also use it to assign leveled books for homework. Takeaway from VA I am implementing in my classroom is creating resources that children can independently refer back to as needed. In the past, I would have visual cues for directions, but now I am working on creating videos or handouts for individual skills. This way, students have more independence to explore for specific areas of projects. You can see it in their final pieces when they have the choice.
Through my experience at VA, I learned how to use technology and resources that I use now with my classes and share with others. Because of my experience with Google Classroom and Google Meet, I've been able to live streaming classes with quarantine students. Students learn how to integrate technology, and they are sharing the skills with other students this year. The creative ways we build relationships with students, colleagues, and parents last year have helped me realize how important it is to build those relationships early and maintain them throughout the school year. The SCL that we focus so much on helps students navigate a difficult year, and they're using those skills as they transition back into the personal life.
And thank you for the opportunity to present tonight. I'm happy to answer any questions that you may have.
Board members, do you have any questions?
I have one. About how many students right now are we serving in our virtual space?
In our homebound program, we have about 20 students, K through 12.
Okay.
I have a question. Are we currently serving any students who are hospitalized?
Yes.
Has that number, or do we have a number, or I guess, what does that look like?
How many that are actually in a hospital setting?
Yeah.
I believe we have one. So the thing about hospitalization is that it's in and out, so we have inpatient and outpatient students.
Do our district teachers go there?
Some of our district teachers who are providing tutoring do it in-person, in the student's home or in the setting of where they are at, and the majority of them are doing virtual tutoring to share.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
I do, I guess I have a question.
Thanks for this. This is encouraging, and I know that it's important to carry forward reflections like this into the future, so I appreciate your presentation. One question, I love, I love the positive, the positivity, but I'm wondering if these virtual-related teaching modalities and things like that were as successful as they are presented, and they are. How do we explain the gaps in learning? Or you're saying, "These are good and should continue, and the gaps happen for other reasons"? Is that how you'd make sense of it?
Yeah, tonight I really wanted to share some just reflections from our teachers on what they learned and took away from a year teaching virtually, and how that impacted them, you know, this school year and their teaching this school year. As I discussed and spoke with and posed these questions to our virtual teachers in the last month or so, it was really a reflective activity for them to think about, hey, what did I learn and what can I take away from this experience? And how can I translate that back into the classroom setting where I am with my students right now?
Mary, I want to zero in on your question, though. You're asking, how do you account for the fact that there are still some gaps in learning and experience? And I guess I would take you back to one of the metrics you reviewed at the last... And I guess I would take you back to one of the metrics you reviewed at the last meeting that did increase last year, both in in-person, but certainly from some virtual students' attendance concerns. So not every student accessed the learning in the same way. I think one of the things that certainly we found is that for a student to be successful, there had to be a really strong system of support around the student, both in school and at home, and that was not always the case. So I don't want to suggest every student had a tremendous experience. That would be far from the truth. But I think we can capture some of the learnings to see what were the experiences that were positive and worked that we can carry forward while recognizing it was certainly not ideal for every student.
Definitely.
Thank you.
Any other questions or comments? Thank you.
Thank you.
Next up is update on Human Resources Department.
Yep, so this is Dr. Kyle coming back up, and I just want to remind the board, this is one of the items on your dashboard. So every year, you do review data on new hires, both activity of the HR department and composition of new hires to the district. So I'm going to hand it over to Dr. Kyle.
Thanks, Dr. Schuler, and thanks for the Board of Education giving me this opportunity to shed a little bit of light on the Department of Human Resources here in the district. We have seven really hardworking individuals that did a lot of work in the past 18 months to make sure. We talked a little bit about it earlier in the presentation, that we had virtual. I think we had about 1,300 kids in virtual, like the biggest elementary school in the whole state. We had our elementary kids come back. There were a lot of things people did. So I just want to give a shout out to Debbie Own, Mariana Ochoa, Kristy Koontz, Janelle Schoen, Jennifer Schoen, Ellen Anderson, and Lisa Mencer. Our HR department continually is moving forward. And board members, if you noticed the personnel report today, it was very thin. It's the first one in a long time that was very thin. Couple things that drive us in the HR department and also are part of what the board works on, Vision 2022 under Learning Support Systems. We really focus on that, continue to hire, develop, and retain high-quality staff. That's like our number one thing. If we do that very well, students learn, good things happen. Also, part of the board's Equity Proactive Practices work plan under commitment to diverse hiring practices. We've worked hard in the past couple of years to recruit diverse teaching candidates through job fairs and university partnerships, the internet, all different types of ways to get more diverse candidates. And then we're also, we're more about it in the December meeting, but create an educational cluster to encourage students to pursue a career in education, still a great career. Couple things like overview of what we've been doing. Hired over 357 staff members in 2021, and we also hired about 140 guest employees. Those would also be called substitutes. We processed about 557 resignations. That includes our BAFs, summer rec, lunch, coaches, crossing guards, subs, everything that's included. Those numbers don't always add up to the same amount, but we've been busy in the HR department. Processed 1,193 employee assignment changes. What kind of happened going into last school year was we had the Virtual Academy at elementary. We also had it at middle school. We had to staff that. So in order to do that, we had to change teachers' jobs, and that's what employment assignment changes are. 193 leave of absence, 49 student teachers. I will give props to Ellen Anderson. We were one of the few school districts that brought in 49 student teachers last year because of COVID. A lot of people just shut the doors. We thought we needed teachers, right? We can't not let them student teach. So we brought them in, even though that's lower than a normal year. We still brought student teachers in last year. The fraudulent unemployment claims, this is a situation where there was a breach at the state level. So we had about 350 claims that were like showing up on people's names that they didn't know. So we would have to contact that person and tell them, like, somebody's putting in a claim for unemployment. We contact unemployment, they contact the state. This isn't just a district 200 problem. This is a lot of school districts in the whole entire state. So that was kind of a newer thing that we saw that we were working on. Lane changes, that could be somebody going from a bachelor's, bachelor's plus 15 to masters, those are the lanes. Micro credentials, we processed 494 micro credentials. Those are those units of study that our teachers do, that they pick topics that they want to learn from, and that they put the time in, and they finish their micro credentials to make them better in the classroom. We had 164 service award recipients at the end of the year. We recognize 15 years, 25 years, and retirees. I'm also the FOIA officer, so we almost hit the 200 mark of FOIAs, which is a lot, about 100 more than a normal year. And then I also oversee permissive transfers. And those are just if somebody says, hey, you know, I want to go to this school instead of that school. If everybody signs off, we say yes, and that's a good process that we have in this district. One of the things that I talked a little bit about, maybe in a couple meetings, I know Brian O'Keefe and Bill Farley before him talked about the implementation of a new HR payroll system called iVisions. In the middle of doing Virtual Academy and staffing things and moving people, we also learned a new program. So that was one of the things we were learning. There's still bells and whistles that we have to figure out, but we're doing a good job with the new program. And then at the start of last school year, we surveyed our staff to see kind of what else they could teach, what things would they want to teach, who would want to feel comfortable in Virtual Academy because that's where they were, which teachers would come in person. And we really tried to put that puzzle together, a virtual, in-person. The Virtual Academy, like I said, we probably had the biggest elementary school in the whole state with 1,300. That's a lot of people, that's a lot of movement. That's moving teachers who usually do EL. They taught, we had reading teachers teaching regular classes. And then within there, too, also, there's the implementation of the Family First Corona Response Act. And then we advised about 1,000 employees regards to absences and childcare needs. We also had to adjust sick days. And then last year, if you remember, it's an interesting year at the high school. We had to get some supervisors, classroom supervisors. So we got parents that came in and did classroom supervision. We also, last year, had guest teachers go a whole year. We're doing that this year, too. We found that's helped with the loss of some of our guest teachers, lunchroom supervisors. And then also, one of the things we did last year is we had to adjust the start of the school year three different times to make sure that we could bring kids in at the elementary level. And I think, I know in this day and age, a lot of times, people are upset about a lot of things, but I want to bring the board back to one of the things that I'm most proud of. We brought in elementary students all year last year. We brought high school, middle school in faster than all of our surrounding areas. It doesn't seem like a lot, but to me, that was a huge accomplishment. So we pivoted a lot. One of the things with staffing, when you look at head counts, if you look at the 20 school year, certified was about 1,110. FY 2021, 1,164, and then FY 2022, 1,160. That bump is really that bump that we did last year to lower class sizes, to bring all the kids in. And then this year, we still have that three-feet distance. So we aren't at the class size caps that we've normally had in the past, and obviously, right now, that's where we're at, and we're going to continue to look at our FTE. But the reason why we jumped from 1,110 to 1,164, and we're kind of maintaining that is because we have to have more space between kids like in normal years. So the class caps, we are not adhering to right now. A couple retirement highlights, we had 56 retirees, 26 non-certified to administration. Bill Farley tells me that was the second most in his lifetime in the district, so that's about 25 to 30 years. So we had a lot of different things moving. One of the goals, like I showed the board, was diversity. And so this past year, we really tried to focus on, number one always is hiring the best candidate, but we also wanted to bring in some diverse hires. So if you look at this past year, we brought in more diversity than years before that. It is a goal we have. I will say, it's a goal that we do have, but the teaching profession in general is losing candidates. And since we're losing teaching candidates, we're also losing diverse teaching candidates. So we're kind of in this catch-22 right now with hires. We want to make sure we fill spots. We also want to look for diverse hires, but again, at the end of the day, we want to get the best candidate. Couple things with retention, we're at 94% compared to other industries. That's a good percentile. And then turnover, education's right around the 20-21%. We're at 6% turnover. Shortages, I talked a little bit about this, but 23% decline in the number of people completing teacher preparation programs. It's definitely a nationwide thing. This isn't just in the state of Illinois, but Illinois has been hit hard with teacher shortages. And there's been a, Illinois Association of Regional Superintendents conducted a recent survey. 591 of the 853 districts, 77% said they had a teacher shortage problem. 93% problem with hiring subs. State Board of Education, in 2017, the state had 1,000 unfilled teaching positions. This year, it's 1,700. We are starting to see that in District 200. I will say, going back to the shortages, we have had to utilize outside resources for our support staff, and now some for teaching positions that are hard to find. So we are starting to feel that, even though we're an incredible school district, I do love this place, we are starting to see some of the shortages. One of the pieces that was part of the start of the presentation was creating that career pathway, educational career pathway. I feel like we have the teachers in our buildings at Wheaton North, at Wheaton Warrenville South. We have the teachers there. We want to target current high school students to complete at some point the educational career pathway. Some point, get to local college and university, get that education degree, and then come back and get an interview in our district. We have students in our high school that we could create this pipeline. I believe in December, there'll be two new courses that we're going to add to the course offering book for next year at the high school, and those will be two more courses that we're going to add to this education career pathway. So our goal, and you've seen other districts that have started to do this a little bit before us, is to try and start really targeting the resources that we have, which are kids here. They've surveyed teachers, and they usually teach within about 30 miles of where they grow up. They don't go much further than that. They stay close to where they grew up. So we think we have them. We've had challenges, I'm not going to deny. When I did this on Friday, it was 48.5. What are we trying to do with some of these challenges? We have teacher assistance. It's down, I think, as of this morning, was at 41. We're trying to consolidate some positions and see if we could hire some teachers. Since we aren't getting any applications for teachers' assistance, we're trying to think outside the box and get people to fill open positions. Some of the areas we've struggled is psych, social workers, OT, occupational therapists, and physical therapists, and speech pathologists. Guest teachers, this testing, the new mandate from the governor of testing weekly and/or show your vax card, we lost about 100 guest teachers. So we're in about the 250 range, where we were right around 350 last year. Staff nurses, special education teachers, bilingual teachers, foreign language business teacher, and then lunchroom supervisors. Those are areas that we're struggling. It doesn't mean that we've given up. What we're going to try and do, I was hoping to tell you that you've seen these awesome signs as you drive up with QR codes that you could just scan. We're hoping to tap into some of our parents who might be interested, if they know there's positions, just to hit the QR code and apply. Last year, when we needed those just supervisors, we got 12 to 15 of them. If we get 10 to 15 people to open up some of these spots, that'll really help us. Couple things we've done to try and increase the amount of guest teachers, we went from $85 to 115. Permanent guest teachers, 115 to 125. Long-term guest teachers, 115 to 145. We negotiated a new CEA contract, which raised their minimum wage. We posted jobs in the Tribune, Indeed, online, website, Twitter, Facebook, everything we can possibly do. I've attended a lot of educational job fairs, and we're using the QR codes at all 21 buildings. I noticed a local District U46 that's used that. They said they had some success with that. It's kind of low and high-tech mixed together, but I think we're not going to give up. We have open jobs, we're going to do that. We're contracting out hard-to-fill certified, non-certified positions. When I went to that number of, I think, 45 open positions, I do want to share, what we've done is we've had TAs take on additional assignments and teachers additional assignments. So we are still meeting the minutes that we need and still providing what we need to provide, but we have some people like at elementary where lunch duty starts at 10 and almost ends at like 12:30 or almost the end of the day. So we have people, we have lunch supervisors, but we need more because of COVID, because the lunch spaces might be smaller in some places. So what we're doing is we're tapping into our teachers and our support staff, and now we want to tap into our community. So if anybody's listening and would like to jump in and apply, I would say please do that. I will bring your direction back to what we do in HR. Our goal is to continue to hire, develop, and retain high-quality staff and actively recruit diverse teaching candidates. And we're hoping, in December, you'll hear more about those two classes, but our goal is to create that education career cluster. Being a teacher is an incredible job. We need to continually market it and tell people this is a good path to go, and we've got kids in our own boundaries that we could start tapping into them and getting them to be the future teachers. So I wanted to share the HR presentation with everybody and open it up for questions.
Any questions for Dr. Kyle?
I have a question. So looking at all this, and I think it's fantastic that we have the career pathway for our students, but realistically, that's several years away before those people hopefully potentially come back. And so I guess what, and this is a very, very open question, and I'm not expecting an exact answer, but you know, I guess, what is our path forward for the next five years? As far as like, how are we looking at that for something like foreign language, which, you know, I would assume is a difficult position to fill in regular times? And now this, like, and I go back to Mrs. Moran's presentation about virtual learning, like, do we see that? And again, I don't want to, I'm not trying to create something here, but is that something potentially that we might need to look at down the road? And because I remember reading something about foreign languages, where kids are basically taking almost like a virtual class for foreign language through another provider or something that, what was it, Edgenuity, you know, something like that? If for some reason, we can't fill some of these positions, like, I guess, sort of, what does that long-term picture look like? And I know that's not an exact question, but I mean, I guess, what's being done to, and that's not necessarily a District 200 question either, I'm talking public education where this is a problem, like, what are those things looking like? Do you have any sense of that?
Yeah, so again, I would say first focus is on using every recruiting strategy we can to fill positions. So I think what you're talking about is perhaps an alternate approach, certainly like blended learning experiences and the use of platforms like Edgenuity. Like, there's some places instructionally where that makes sense, and that's where we need to focus use of those platforms, not as a replacement if we can't find a teacher, right? So I think in the short term, you heard from Dr. Kyle a lot about recruitment, so we have increased the relationships we have with a lot of our student-teacher universities for this year. I think that is one pathway to make sure that those students that are coming out and joining the teaching profession, we have a relationship and a point of connection with them. I think that is a strategy to help, and especially in some of the hard-to-fill, too. I think as we moved into this year, I think the HR department by need was a little reactive in hiring, like, we just, we got to some of it probably a little later than we normally would in a year. So I think being proactive, especially in hard-to-fill, will help. I don't think we will be in a place in the next year or two where we're having to look at strategies like that, but I think it's just going to put an emphasis on recruiting, recruiting strategies and opportunities, and using resources within the district. Probably our best recruiting tool is our staff and our community, right? I think using those that we have. So I think we'll continue to get creative in that space, and I guess, I think some of what you're talking about, why I get the question, I don't think we're there yet in terms of having to really think to that level of using a virtual teacher.
Okay. One example, too, is like psychologists. We're going to post those late December, and we know we're going to have positions next year. See if we can get people early, you know, even posting jobs like Dr. Schuler said earlier and trying to get people before other school districts, too. So those are some of the techniques I think that we're going to put into play for next year as well.
Other questions or comments for Dr. Kyle? I have one, just, so a thought. I happened to be at Pleasant Hill, I think it was last week. I happened to be at Pleasant Hill, I think it was last week, and as I was in the office, a new lunch supervisor who had just spent their first week had come in, and she was like, "This is the best job. I wish I would have known about this sooner. You know, I've got to figure out how we can get more people." So in my mind, as I'm sitting here listening to you, I'm wondering, could we do, Erica, maybe like a little video where we interview possibly some lunch supervisors, some substitutes, some teaching assistants?
TAs, right.
To be able to promote that and push that out there so that people can hear from other people that are doing it, that, hey, this is an opportunity, you can be in your child's school, you can, you know, works with your hours of school during the day, and maybe that's hearing from a face, seeing a face versus just seeing a posting?
Right.
And knowing what it involves might be a way to recruit. So just a thought.
Chris, you read my mind. I was actually at a professional learning opportunity last week and was hearing from other districts on some of the things that they've been doing, using social media campaigns, testimonials from other staff members, in particular this one campaign that I learned about focused on substitute teachers too. And so it's just something I haven't gotten a chance to talk to Dr. Kyle about, but absolutely something we'll pursue.
Great, thank you.
We're on it.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Okay.
I have one comment and one question. On the unemployment issue, I know both businesses I've worked in in the last year have had that issue, so it was, you know, as you pointed out, it was not specific to our district. And then I had one question, what's the difference between a permanent guest teacher and a long-term guest teacher?
Yeah, so a permanent sub, like a long-term, you're going to have somebody who basically goes into a teaching position, somebody's out for a semester or longer, that's long-term. They're going to actually assume that role as the teacher. The permanent guest teacher is a teacher that we usually just employ for a semester, but we've opened it up to an entire year. That permanent guest teacher can teach anywhere in the building, any day. Today we find out we have four openings, we're going to put that permanent guest teacher there. The long-term may be, I'm out for a semester for a surgery. We pull a permanent guest teacher, make them long-term guest teacher if they have the right credentials, and then they have that position, where they're doing the lesson plans, where they're putting the work into the job, as opposed to a permanent guest teacher, they come in and they get the lesson plans, because they're there.
Okay. Which answers my next question, which was the difference in the daily pay, but it's because of what you just said, the work. Thank you.
Three quick comments. First off, when you look back at last year and the data, you know, I knew what was going on, but to look at these numbers is pretty remarkable. I think your department is another one of the unsung heroes of last year. So just fantastic work to try to accomplish some of the things you've talked about. Number two, I actually had my first teacher group dinner last night, and the stress, the, you know, the spaces, the hiring challenges we're having are definitely being felt on our teachers. They were talking about each individual level. I think it's very real. Well, we know it's real, but I could see it and hear it and see it in their faces and hear it in their voices last night. And then in terms of these other, this last page of the actions we're taking, you know, we're competing against, you know, we don't often compete as a school district other than in athletics or events, but we're competing against all these other school districts for the same problem. So we have to, and I see this in here, we have to think differently. We have to think like business. We have to market, build our brand, use different platforms to promote our successes. And, you know, I just want to continue to encourage the team to think outside the box, different platforms. You know, in some respects, as we're trying to build that brand and recruit, you know, you get the outside, you know, noise, I would say, sometimes that kind of gets in the way of what we're trying to accomplish here. And, you know, it all happens in a classroom, the teacher or the student. We need to fill these spots as much as possible, as fast as possible, and it's a challenge, we're competing, we'd have to continue to think differently. So I thank you for all the work you're doing, but know that there's always more work to do, you know that.
Absolutely.
And your team knows that.
Any other questions?
Just a couple. Thank you. So in looking at this, the most concerning thing was the vacancies in the special education teacher assistant. I have a hard time visualizing what that looks like for a student who doesn't have maybe their aide or assistant in a classroom, and hearing that we're kind of pulling from other places, but is that a consistent staff member who's in a room? I think I struggle with that.
Yeah, kind of like what Brad was talking about, is we're trying to think outside of the box, and Brad's correct that the teachers and TAs have stepped up, and we're, you know, when we make a kind of a different plan to make sure that we meet the needs of the kids, we don't want to have a different person every day. So we're bringing in the same person with that kid and making sure that they get the pay for the extra time that they're putting in. You're right, Mr. Paulson, when you say that people are stressed. I don't disagree, we can't do this forever, so that's why we have to continue to market. And I think, like, when I think of our community, I think of CUSD Two Hundred, we have great parents that if they're looking for something to do, I think they'll step up and help us as well. But we have covered what we need to cover, and like, we're thinking outside of the box in ways where we've got no applicants on TA jobs, and just two schools just this week are cashing in some TA positions so we could post some special ed positions, and we're hoping to get some special ed teachers that can come in and do some of the things that need to be done for those students. And two people is better than four open jobs that nobody's applied for. So we're trying, that's kind of the out-of-the-box that we're trying to do, but when we do that, we work with the special ed director, we work with the special ed case managers, we work with all the powers that be to make sure that we're not bringing one kid, one person in one day, another person in another day. We're trying to make it as consistent as possible.
Thank you. Two thoughts on reaching the community. Do any of the co-ops provide assistance? Like, the co-ops that provide therapists, psychologists, do any of them provide assistance?
We have, we have some, we, like, so the areas that we're struggling with, we've looked for outside, like, companies to try and fill some of these positions. They're as successful as we are right now. So like, for psychologists, for next year, we're posting jobs in December, and we know what jobs we're going to have, so we hope to be the first ones on the street with jobs, and we can get some psychologists this next year so that we're not overloading other people and giving people over just to make sure that we cover the psych, the minutes that we need for each kid. So we're trying that, and that's what we're instituting.
Okay, thank you. One comment about reaching the community and going along with what Ms. Crabtree said about doing the videos, I think also just a blurb in the community outreach that we do after the meetings, because I would think that we probably have, and maybe what you experienced, Chris, at Pleasant Hill, a lot of grandparents who may be interested in some of these positions, but might not reach it on social media, might not reach it at the school door, but, you know, are available during the day to provide that and may, you know, be interested in doing that. So that's just a thought. Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Okay, thank you, Dr. Kyle. Written reports were the monthly financial report, the FOIA report, board communication log, the citizens advisory committee report. Are there any other reports from board members?
I have one. I have been to two of my adopted schools, and just wanted to quickly report on that. I went to Bauer a couple weeks ago, and Mrs. Moore hosted me, where during their time that they have what they call their Paws Family Meetings, which is a program where all the students are put into families that consist of kids of all different grades. And it was a really fun program, and they have like the fourth and fifth graders go get their first and second graders who are in their families, so they make sure they get to the right place. And it was just really great to see all the kids interacting with each other, with kids who they wouldn't normally interact with. And the activity that they were doing that day was taking a slip of paper and on one side writing something unique or special about themselves, and then on the other side writing a way to be kind to another person. And then what they did is they took those slips of paper from all the families in the whole school, and they made a big, huge paper chain. And the idea of that, when I was going around, I heard a teacher explain that while we all bring unique individual skills to something, that we are all stronger together, you know, when we make the chain. So I just thought it was a really great activity, and it was really great to see all the kids in the school interacting with each other, so that was really wonderful. And then I went to Washington last week, and Mrs. Craig hosted me on the Friday, which to my very, very happy surprise, was the fiftieth day of kindergarten, and they were celebrating with the nineteen-fifties theme, which was really super fun and super cute. And at the beginning of the tour, we went into a kindergarten room, and they were, I think they were coming in from a break, and they were learning how to do the twist. So we got to do the twist with the kindergarten nerves. And then we did our tour, and we saw, you know, all the wonderful things going on in the upper grades. And then as we were ending our tour, she grabbed me, like, she's like, "Ooh, here's another kindergarten question, they're doing something." And we walked in, and they were learning how to do the hand drive from Grease. And so it was just really a very, very fun day, and so I got to dance twice at Washington, and it was just very super fun. And then lastly, I just wanted to thank the district and the Wheaton Park District and Wheaton Pediatrics and Pediatrist for hosting the vaccine clinics and having us put that information out there to help families find a local place to get their vaccines. And I know we went to the Park District when my older kids were eligible, and they did a fantastic job there. And so I just want to thank Mr. Bernard and the Park District for partnering with us again on that clinic.
Any other reports from board members?
I don't have, do you have a report?
No, go ahead.
I'm going to talk about the topics for future discussion.
I'll just quickly want to share just a little feedback. I too met with my teacher group, and I've also met with a couple other teachers who were outside in my teacher group, so the feedback is coming from both groups. It was really encouraging to hear, every teacher I spoke to said that they're really happy to be back, they're happy to have the energy in the classroom with the students. And just a couple things, and this is just to offer us feedback that they find us struggles. Initially and still ongoing, they feel some of the kids who have come back have a hard time of jumping back into being a student. There's been a lot more social behavioral issues than typical, so that was some feedback they gave. And then also, perhaps, it seems there's been an increase in referrals to speech, so I don't know if that's been felt at the school level, or, you know, we have the professionals to address that, but that was feedback from the teachers, which I found helpful. And Brad.
Are we done with other reports? Go ahead.
Yeah, just, I did get to all three of my schools. I went to Weasbrook the week after our last board meeting, and I was so encouraged that I scheduled a vacation day to get to the other two, which happened to be the day of the Halloween party, so it was a good and bad choice, but it was good to see the excitement. But it was, you know, there's two things I like. You get a, I don't know, a really good chance to connect with the principals and, you know, spend fifteen or twenty minutes talking with each of them, and, you know, while I meet them, I don't really know them until I do this, so I really find that valuable because it gets another lens of the kids, and of course, seeing the kids in each, you know. First, I want to thank each principal, they spend a lot of time, not only in their office, but walking around, but just seeing the energy of the kids and really just the, really the way the SCL components are just interwoven into the day. You know, it's really enlightening to see that and to hear some of the principals talk about that. It's not, okay, we're going to stop reading and talk about integrity. It's building those skills into the lesson plans and the way they interact, so it was really encouraging. Yeah, and so that's it.
Dr. Yubel?
I guess I do have one. I also met with the teacher group, and some of the, it was wonderful feedback, wonderful teachers, but they did also report a similar concern to what Angela offered, which is this increase in some challenges students are experiencing returning to the social environment. So I'm connecting that with Dr. Kyle's presentation of the, from Brad's word, remarkable work that the district has done to get staff in our schools, and I think this kind of discussion can develop an appropriate level of gratitude to our teachers. And there's a lot more that goes on than when I send my kids to school, and they learn and they come home. There's a lot going on behind the scenes during COVID to make that happen, and I just want to affirm the appreciation for our teachers who, if it were ideal, could teach just academics, but in the real world, their life lessons every day that teachers are working, working with our children on and working through this challenge. So sort of a combination of a report and an appreciation for the HR and the work of getting these wonderful teachers working with our students.
Any others?
So in anticipation of the topics for future discussion, I see that we're approaching my least favorite meeting of the year because it has the audit in it. And so we've always been, had the benefit of Mr. Matheson being on the board, who always gave us a little, like, playbook of the important things to look at, so a request for me, but also probably for our new board members. If we could get from our auditor or Dr. O'Keefe a little, you know, salient points, what are the most important sections or segments of it to look at, because even after looking at it for as many years as I have, it's a little overwhelming, and I think we would all benefit from some focus.
So I already have thought about that. I'm going to use Mr. Matheson's template, so to speak, from the last couple of years, and kind of draft my own, and then I will get with Dr. O'Keefe, because I'm not the expert on school finance that Jim was, but I think I can, I am a bean counter, so I think I can help give you a Cliff Notes version, so that's my goal.
We'll take any help we can get.
And as soon as we can get a copy of that, if we can even get it a little earlier than the Friday release, I think we've had that before, that's just helpful because it is quite a...
Yeah, so I've been talking with, emailing with Dr. Schuler and Dr. O'Keefe about the timing.
Great, thank you.
So I will prioritize it once it comes.
So topics for future discussion are the 2020, 2021 audit, 2021 property tax levy, five-year financial projections. Next regular board meeting is December eighth.
Ms. Crabtree? I'm sorry, I have a topic...
Yes. Oh, I'm sorry, I forgot to ask, does anybody have any topics for future discussion?
I actually have a topic for future discussion that I would like to bring to the board and the administration tonight. We have obviously had a very heavy load over the past eighteen months with COVID, and it's been hard to focus on some other things that are still happening in our school. And so what I'm bringing to the board tonight has nothing to do with COVID. It is based on feedback that I have received this year, but also in previous years, and I'm bringing it up now because we get updates, potential updates to handbooks in around February, and so I want to, wanted to bring this now so the district and the administration has time to review this topic. What I am asking for tonight is a formal review of our district's dress code, specifically the point of all clothing must cover from shoulders to mid-thigh. It appears in all three handbooks, and I believe this particular point predominantly and unfairly targets girls. In addition to girls in general, feedback I have received indicates a tendency to issue dress code violations disproportionately to girls with curvy figures, as well as girls who go through puberty earlier and who have larger bust sizes. As a mother of two sons, I have never had to think about the dress code, not once. A parent of girls shared with me that she thinks about the dress code every day and has asked her daughter, "Are you going to get in trouble for wearing that?" As we look at this issue, I would like to ask ourselves why the standard of not showing shoulders, abdomens, or thighs is in place during our normal school day? Why are these body parts problematic? What is the intention of this policy, and what is the message it is sending? The lens we use on this topic needs to be reevaluated. I want to be clear that I am not saying that girls should come, should be able to come to school in bikinis, and boys should be able to come to school in speedos, but I don't understand why a girl's top that may expose her belly button only when she raises both hands in the air is problematic and considered against the dress code. And I wonder why we are asking our staff to discern, to spend time discerning the length of a girl's top. We need to factor in what is readily available as well. I am told by girl moms that finding shorts that are mid-thigh in length are hard to come by, and the ones that you can find are from higher-end retailers where a pair of shorts could cost thirty to forty dollars, and this is not attainable for many of our families. could cost thirty to forty dollars, and this is not attainable for many of our families. From a social-emotional perspective, I feel this policy inadvertently exacerbates our girls being ashamed of their changing bodies as they grow and develop, and characterizes our boys as hormonally crazed males who can't control themselves if they see a shoulder, an abdomen, or a thigh of the opposite sex. Whether a girl's wearing a turtleneck and jeans or a tank top and cutoff shorts, the boundaries are exactly the same. They are identical. One is not any more of an invitation over the other, and we need to make sure that is the message we are sending to both boys and girls. Another issue that has been brought to my attention is the fact that boys who train for athletics are allowed to remove their shirts, both indoors and outdoors. Girls, on the other hand, I am told, are discouraged from removing their shirts in training in their sports bras, and I have been told that girls can actually get in trouble for this. Girls get just as hot as boys, and girls in perfectly acceptable workout gear or a sports bra are more covered than boys with no shirt on at all. As such, I would like to receive a review of the guidance, or formal guidance issued on dress codes for athletic training, both inside and outside of our buildings, that are equitably applied to all students. What I am saying with all this is that the part of the dress code that states all clothing must cover from shoulders to mid-thigh is antiquated and needs to be updated. As part of this review, I would like to ask that students of all genders be involved in this conversation, and at the end, if we, even if we end up relatively in the same place, I want to be open and transparent and specific about what our dress code expectations are in both our schools and in our athletic departments. I would like to know who is responsible for enforcing the policy within each building, and I would like to see a policy that can be consistently and objectively administered by both male and female staff to all of our students. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Booton.
Ms. Crabtree? Oh, sorry. I would, for a topic for a discussion for our next meeting?
Yep.
Since we're heading into December and the pediatric vaccine is available, I would hope that we could rediscuss mitigations and how they are going and where they're headed.
Our next regular meeting is December eighth, 2021, here at Hubble. We are moving into a closed session. I move to adjourn to closed session pursuant to the Illinois Open Meetings Act exemption, five ILCS one-twenty slash two, sub-paragraph C, public, sub-paragraph one. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Long, Mrs. Hutchinson.
Ms. Crabtree?
Yes.
Mr. Long?
Yes.
Lander?
Yes.
Yes.
Mr. Paulson?
Yes.
Yes.
There is no action expected following the closed session. Meeting is adjourned.